I'd like to call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District School Board to order. Thank you for coming, everyone. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope everybody enjoyed the snow. It's probably back to major business tomorrow. Before we get things rolling tonight, I just wanted to recognize a few people. This Saturday is the first citizens banquet where we honor our teachers of the year and our classified people of the year. And I would like to recognize them. I don't think anybody's here, any of them are here tonight. But anyway, we're gonna do this anyway. Jackie Renaud is a media specialist at Robert Frost. She's for the elementary. Darby Hector, the media specialist at Mark Twain, is the teacher of the year for the junior high. Carolyn Drake, high school teacher of the year. She's an art teacher at the high school. Classifieds Pamela Fontaine, the detention monitor at Butte Creek. Mary Braneman, secretary at Silver Crest and Pratom. And Julie Yount for the high school does campus security there. So congratulations to all these people. Honors well deserved. And we are not done. The school district's gonna be well represented at the banquet on Saturday night. Kevin Griffin, who works as a special needs assistant at the high school, was recognized as for the distinguished service award of the year. Well deserved, if you know Kevin. Awesome guy. Our student rep, she's not here tonight, but our regular student rep Macy Mulholland, Silverton's future first citizen. So that's a great honor for her. And I would also like to recognize Pete Paritas, our maintenance director, former maintenance director. Pete's taken a little different direction in his life, so he resigned his position. And Pete deserves a well-deserved round of applause also for all his years of dedication to the school. So congratulations to all those people. If you see him, let him, give him a high five or whatever. Okay, consent agenda. We have a few things on there. Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. Student reps, Macy and Acacia aren't here tonight, so filling in are William Ward and Lilly Paritas. Nice to see you guys.
Nice to see you guys. It's been awhile.
It has been awhile. William was here last year, if you remember.
Yeah, so I'll start off with the clubs and then Lilly, sports. ASV, we're preparing for many spring events and we also have Queen of Hearts Dance, which was set for last Friday, but because of the weather, we had to postpone it till February 14th, Valentine's Day. Coronation will take place at the boys' basketball game and the dance will be immediately after. We are also in the process of starting Mr. SHS, a fundraiser event for medical teams international. Mr. SHS committee will be holding interviews, REI. They held them last Thursday for the boys and they completed their applications. Upcoming events are prom and spirit week. As of now, we're starting some committee meetings to plan ideas. Key Club, which is run by Megan Miller, a science teacher, is planning a small Valentine's service activity focused on showing their love for Silverton. NHS, run by Kristy Arnold, has upcoming service projects for members and will be sending out notes for them to participate. Theater, taught by Mr. O, was very successful in a showing of Steel Magnolias, student directed by Savannah Shue, as well as Arms in the Man, student directed by Carissa Mathi. Upcoming events in spring for theater are Seussical the Musical, which will combine theater, choir, and band students. Auditions for Seussical the Musical started last week and continue this week. FBLA is run by a new advisor this year, Trish Conlin. FBLA has a board meeting on Wednesday morning where board members will meet to plan upcoming events. Regionals start early this February and board members are also preparing for that event. FFA, which is run by Scott Towery and Sarah MacArthur, just went to state for ag sales. Recently, they received first place in districts and state degrees. This month, they are practicing parliamentary procedures. Red Cross, run by Kirsten Barnes. Students are taking training for disaster response in case disaster happens in Oregon. Red Cross club is also participating in elementary preparedness where high school students visit elementary schools and teach about safety with the goal and motto of be prepared, not scared. Speech, run by Mrs. Kansiewitz, just participated in a tournament hosted at Pacific University. Reagan Shue placed sixth junior ADS after dinner speech. Julie Golan placed third and fourth in radio and pros. And several team members semifinaled were Megan Knox, Melie Kazel, and Kellen Wall. Finally, choir, run by Mrs. Kircher, Jennifer Kircher, is preparing for the next performances. They're introducing new music and working on sight reading. So yeah, lots of club stuff going on at the high school right now.
And for the sports, the boys wrestling team, the boys earned second place at the Milwaukee tournament on February 1st. There will be a Woodburn duel on Tuesday and there are less than 10 practices left until districts. Swimming, the swimming team has one week left. They have all improved a lot and they will not have any more meets this season. The dance team, the dance girls have been working hard on new routines and practicing. Girls basketball, the girls varsity team has won half their games. Recently, they have been doing very well. The girls have a home game scheduled for 7 o'clock against Crescent Valley. There's also a home game scheduled for Friday at 7:00 PM against Woodburn. After the game on Friday, Queen of Hearts will take place. Boys basketball, so far this season, the varsity boys are doing very well. They have lost six games and won nine. They have a game scheduled for Wednesday against Crescent Valley at Crescent Valley at 7:00 PM. And there's also a game scheduled for Friday at 7:00 PM against Woodburn at Woodburn.
Any questions for William and Lilly? Just for the record, Lilly was honored with a nationwide basketball award from McDonald's the other night. So congratulations.
It's a big deal. Congratulations.
A year of years of free Big Macs. Okay, thank you, you guys. Thanks for coming. Moving along to discussion items. Oh, why do I always miss that one? I'd like to open it up with audience with visitors. Would anyone like to address the board this evening? No one? Okay. Moving on to discussion items then. We have the second reading on a few policies. I'm gonna go through these one by one. There were a couple of them that we had made a couple changes on that were in our packet. Policy BBB, board elections. Anything? Okay, BBFA, board member ethics and conflicts of interest. Okay, the next one was one that was in our packet with some changes. BBFB, board member ethics and nepotism. Changes look okay to everybody? Okay, EBBB, injury wellness reports. EBCB, emergency drills. Changes okay on this one? It was in our packet? Okay. IKF, graduation requirements. Okay, good. There'll be one more reading on those then before they're adopted. In an email today, Andy sent out a couple new ones. So we're gonna look at those tonight too. And Andy's gonna jump in whenever he needs to to explain these a little further. JECB, admission of non-resident students. Questions or comments on this one? Are you gonna want to lump both these together or one by one, Andy?
I'd recommend that you lump the two of them together.
Okay.
They go hand in hand. I'm really concerned about these two changes. I know it came from legislature. But what it does is we lose control about who enters our district. Basically throws the doors wide open. We can't decide on what students might be beneficial for our district and which may not. And I think it can really have a negative impact on our in-district students. So I'm very concerned about these and I am leaning to be more in favor of closing the door to out-of-district students.
But do we, I mean, do we even have a choice if this becomes, if these new changes become state law? Why don't you go ahead and explain it a little bit, Andy?
Yeah, this is widow. This is state law. But there is some discretion with the school district in order to have some say in how you handle it. I wrote a few things on the whiteboard over here that may just help with your interpretation. And so I'll get to these policies in just a moment. But if you think in terms of the options of students attending other districts, then there are multiple options available in the state of Oregon. Most of these are regulated by statute. The first one, and these aren't in ranked order by any means, but the first one is open enrollment. You just took action tonight and your consent agenda to state that number at zero. And the open enrollment law was approved, I believe, two sessions ago. And that allowed for essentially open movement of students across district lines if the board designates a certain number in order to do that. For the last few years, you designated that number at zero and I think it's appropriate for this district. The inter-district transfer law and the ruling specific to that is really what we're discussing with the application of these two policies. And this transfer option has been in existence for years and has actually been very well-received and well-used in this district with our neighboring districts as well. Other options available, and this has been used on a much, much smaller level over the last couple of years, in fact, nonexistent, I believe, over the last two years, is tuition-based options where students from other districts can come into Silver Falls district and pay the tuition amount that you established in July of the year. With the open enrollment legislation, it essentially put tuition nonexistent because many schools understood that they were releasing their students to go from one district to another. So tuition really only applies from districts, sending districts where those borders are closed. And we've got a couple of neighboring districts which have done that over the last four or five years and we have tuitioned in a few students on those occasions. The fourth one is mutual and regional agreement. This one is really pretty specific to, let's say, IEP students or special education students when there's a program within a district and we charge an appropriate fee in order for students from another district to attend structured learning program, basic skills overseen by Linda. We have some districts, students from other school districts that we use this option. We sometimes receive a court order from other areas of the state where students are placed in Silver Falls district. And then finally, there are some very specific rules around homeless students in place in their either attendance area or at least the attendance area that they became homeless. So as we're going through this conversation about these two policies, even over the course of the next couple of months, keep the six multiple options in mind and understand that we're limiting our discussion to none. So with that said, last year, the legislature approved changes to the inter-district transfer legislation in the state of Oregon. And what that legislation allowed at the time was really as much as anything, a tightening, and that's what these policies are all about, but it's a tightening of the inter-district transfer rule. So Wally is correct in that the legislation does restrict the control that you as a local board and we as a school district can implement specific to the approval of students from other districts. So currently, and this is statewide, in-district transfer students using the inter-district transfer option can apply to a school district and there's typically quite a bit of information that's provided similar to our registration form. The option of asking for that information will no longer be legal. We can ask their name, their date of birth, their grade, and we can ask if they've been expelled. Those are essentially the four questions you can ask now on a transfer application form if a student wants to transfer into Silver Falls school district. Once approved, then we can ask all the additional detailed questions specific to their registration as we would with any other student in the district. So some of that control that we're used to will no longer be there with use of inter-district transfers from one district to another. As a district, this legislation still allows you as a district, as a board, to revoke transfers for students if you find that after they're entered into your school district, their attendance or their behavior is such that, you know, after, I think, reasonable warnings, those students can be sent back to their attending or their resident district, excuse me. So that is still the case, that's currently the case and will be the case with the new legislation beginning July 1st. It does tighten up some other items like school districts are now not allowed to send their school buses into neighboring school districts with the intent of picking up transfer students to bring them in into their district. And there were some other details specific to that. So those are the major differences and you as a board need to designate an amount similar to the open enrollment legislation. A number of students by either grade level or elementary, middle, and high school levels that you will allow transferring into your school district. So that's a little bit of a tighter element. And those students must be selected in a lottery fashion. Meaning, if you, well, in this school district, you currently have about 320 students which are out-of-district transfers into this district and we let go about 160, 170, I believe. So the 320 students that you let into this district would have to be selected in a lottery fashion using a process that will be more refined than what we're doing now. Now, just to complicate the matters a little bit more, and actually, I think this is a good thing, is the special session of the Oregon legislature is currently considering a bill which would better define two of these elements. One of them is specific to the grandfathering of the existing students in the district. So of the 320 students in the district, those who choose to stay next year would be allowed to stay. And that grandfathering element would be in as long as they're in this district. And really, it's up to you whether it's one year until they graduate from high school. But you're gonna hear me say, if they're in this district, I think we should keep them until they graduate from high school as long as they behave and have good behavior or behavior in attendance. And second to that is it allows siblings of existing students to transfer into our district as a priority in the lottery when they reach school age in the years to come. So I think each of those are advantageous to the process. So there's just a quick summary of the legislation and it's spelled out in these policies, which is your first reading tonight. And I'll leave it at that for board discussion. It's a lot of information.
Would we have, I mean, I know a lot of this is a little bit unclear right now, but would we have any other choices than to do what they're telling us to?
It's all or nothing, isn't it?
Yeah, it's all or nothing. The two options are really what you have, the top two. You either choose open enrollment or you choose inter-district transfer or you choose to not allow anyone to transfer in, which is an option as well. I can't sit here and encourage that option and I've had a conversation with a couple of you. But that is an option for consideration as a board. I think if you were to truly ponder that option, I think there would be some pretty serious implications that would have to be discussed and reviewed.
So you say that when we pick a number, is that, say we grandfather in the 320 that are already here, would we pick a number above that 320 then? So we'd have, say, 400.
Sure.
But the 320 already get to stay. The others are picked by the ones who apply and then you just draw names out of a hat?
Correct.
Interesting. But if we did close our, if we didn't allow anybody, then I assume the 320 wouldn't be allowed either.
That's where it gets pretty dicey.
My assumption is they'd be able to stay through the grandfathering clause.
Well, you still have to designate X number of students in order for that to occur. You still have to designate a number.
And then we just ratchet it down.
What's that?
As they graduate through, you would just ratchet it down.
Correct.
But we don't know if they would let us close our borders but still allow those kids to be here just because they've already been here.
Right.
You might have to pick one or the other. I don't know.
So I think there-
Yeah, there's some details to flesh out.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, there's some details to flesh out.
There are a couple of principles I'd like you to remind you of and have you as you consider this dialogue. Number one is, you know, the most obvious is the monetary impact. The net impact this year is about 5% of your total enrollments, about 180 students net gained to this district, which is a little over a million dollars into this district and allows you to do things that you obviously wouldn't be able to do without a million dollars. But second to that, I encourage you to, as you dialogue about this, to think of the work that you've done to this point related to the visioning process. And what some of those, and I think each of the seven of you can kind of think in your mind what some of those kind of agreeable elements are in your mind that will likely come out of this process. And where do transfer students fit within that? Where does parent choice fit within that? Where does the option of having in and out-of-district enrollment? And where does that fit within your entire discussion related to this? So I think that this might be a first applied opportunity of you to use your visioning process to help ground you in a pretty significant decision, especially related to your approach to inter-district transfers.
Transfers have been a really important part of this district over the last many years. But this is really a game changer. This changes the rules. I'm not so sure it's a good thing.
You're in good company. There's no doubt. And we've heard that from superintendents and we're beginning to get that more and more from board members. The legislation is approved and it is law. And so I think if there's any silver lining to that element, Wally and you and I emailed a little bit about this today, and that is that everyone now needs to play by the same rules. Where we've been doing a good job as a district in our cooperation with, say, Mount Angel and Salem Kaiser and Stateon and Woodburn and other districts that we have these agreements with, not every district in Oregon has played by the rules and unfortunately, that's resulted in some legislation that's now across the state. It's kind of like driving a car. Some people go more than 55 miles an hour, right? So we make a law that says, don't go more than 55 miles an hour, even though all of us don't break that law necessarily. Well, maybe it's not the best example in the world, especially if you're late for something, but you know what I'm saying. I think, but that's the silver lining to it, Wally, is that everyone in the state will be required to follow the same rules. And so I'm not entirely convinced that we're going to have a large, say, move in of concerning behavior students. If you were to ask me that question, my answer is, I don't know. I don't know until we're getting to it.
Sure. That's the rub. Before, we had a control mechanism where we could look at it and at least see some indicators. Now we can't even see those indicators.
It's true.
As we look at this in the next, I mean, this is the first read, you know, in the next couple of months, I'd like to hear from some of the building principals on this one because it'd be interesting to see how they think this is gonna affect their schools. Plus, how transfer requests, kids transferring in now, how many they turn down because of behavior things and things like that or how many. I would just like to hear some more details from the principals and how they think it could affect buildings and kind of how they look at things now and how it would change how they do, how they allow transfers in and stuff now. I think it would be helpful information. The next couple of months.
Do we know if we can make a correction midterm? If we set a number to allow some transfers in, then we did experience a number of applicants. I guess we wouldn't necessarily know until they were enrolled if they were high needs or that sort of thing. But could we, at another board meeting, revise the number back and-
The board has the option to adjust the number as necessary throughout the year. I think the intent of the legislation is for that number to maybe get higher. But let's say you were to designate 400, but by October and November, you know, clearly you only have 340 kids. There may be some sense to backing that off to 350, I suppose, but I don't know. I think the intent of the law was if you designated 400 students but you still had room for 25 more, the board could make that number 425 mid-year if they wanted to.
Also a question or explanation about the number. You mentioned that we could, we have to set a number by some type of metric, by high schools, middle school, grade school. Is that across the district or can we do it by building or?
The legislation is specific to the district. And then the, my understanding, and there's a little bit of fussiness on that still, Wally, but my understanding is that you, we as a district, you as a board, we can designate the maximum numbers for those schools. Say, for example, if, I mean, we're not gonna put 100 students at Evergreen School when it holds 80 or 85. So we have to have some mechanism in place in order to allow that.
Okay, so we can't do it by building then?
Yes. Even though the law is specific to the district, it's up to us to do it by building.
Other questions or comments? Okay, moving along. Our draft 2014, 2015 school calendar was in our packet. Kevin Palmer, Mark Hannan, and Marie Trager worked on this. And I really like it. They came up with a calendar where all the kids are in school the same days, all the, every day, every year, all year long. So discussion on this and if we have any questions, I'm sure Kevin and Mark and Marie would be able to chime in.
I think eliminates a lot of confusion throughout the district and I think parents will like this. My only concern is doing conferences before Thanksgiving. I can't remember, I think we did that this year. Do you know if we saw a lot of parents not participating because it was that holiday week or-
No, the current calendar, I believe, had the traditional-
We haven't done it for a few years. When my kids were in grade school, we did Thanksgiving, but it changed and we haven't. It's always been on October for quite a while now.
That's right, we pulled it down.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I've heard good, I like it. I've heard good, you know, the people I know who've looked at it like it. They like the more better teaching blocks. Like the reviews, I thought they liked seeing the conferences right before Thanksgiving because it, that week, that teaching week of Thanksgiving, there wasn't a lot of teaching done because it was right before a big holiday, you know? They just, they liked the calendar.
I like the consistent classroom time through September and October. And I was always a proponent for earlier conferences just because I didn't like a whole week off of Thanksgiving. But I like to see that, all that instructional time in September and October without any breaks.
Yep.
One thing that I remember when we switched back, and you guys who put this together could maybe answer, but one thing that, one reason we had switched in the first place conferences into October was teachers said they wanted to be able to see parents earlier in the year. How does that jive with the Thanksgiving conferences now?
I can speak to that because that was mostly a high school issue. The elementary schools actually preferred it later, having the uninterrupted class time. For the high school, that remains a concern of this new calendar. We're going to have to be very thoughtful in how we communicate with parents prior to conferences if their students are having issues. So that'll be part of the process of planning for next year. And Marie and Kevin and I have talked about that and what that could look like and we tossed around some ideas. So felt like it was worth giving it a shot to have a consolidated calendar.
Okay. With all the ways you have to communicate with parents these days, I would think it'd be doable. Comments? This is an action item later tonight. It'd be pretty cool if we could approve the calendar in February, wouldn't it? First time in a long time. Okay, sounds good. Moving along. Eugene Field School Facility Task Force recommendations, Joanne Stone and Barbara Volle.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I was just really delighted to serve on this task force, this old core group. And I would like to commend Andy on a nice balance of folks that were on this committee. I don't know if you reviewed the names, but we had Bob Dedrick, Jonathan Edmonds, Dan Kaplan, Garth King, DeMoster, Stacy Puskate, Barbara Volle, Tom Schmidt-Gall, Bob Schmidt, and I on the- and I on the citizens' part of it. And if you look through backgrounds, I think he did an excellent job of mixing it up. He had retired former educators, he had parents of school-aged children, he had people with backgrounds in construction and building. I think when we came in here, into the meetings, there were a number of people who had probably voted no on your previous bond issue, okay? And so, and so I thought there was a nice, open balance of folks and I just commend you on your choices who volunteered. It brought a wealth of opinions to the table. We had great discussions. This is not a hastily set, done set of recommendations. They were well thought through. Barb spent a lot of time polling folks, as did Jonathan, trying to get opinions from outside members of the community. So I just really commend this group. The recommendations, you've got a page and you can read, but it says they were developed through four meetings of our task force. Our charge was for the committee to develop Eugene Field facility recommendations for consideration by the board. We were to review the structural information and that was provided by this ZCS engineering, and you probably have this packet with all kinds of stuff in there. Besides this information, we had a tour of the building. It was pretty extensive and the most fun I saw was when they opened up the electrical panel for Eugene Field. You could just see, you know, like, oh, I want to get my hands on that. It was just, it was really enlightening to see, you know, the back corners and all. We reviewed the structural information, consideration given to other factors also. We looked at current and future classroom and programming needs, potential when we add the full-day kindergarten, the numbers of kids coming in, instructional, curricular needs, technology requirements. We were looking at a building that's 90 years old. If you bought a 90-year-old house, even if it had been maintained carefully over the years, you're going to have trouble with your internet. You're going to have some things that are going to be a problem to bring them up to sell. Parking access, playground access, safety needs, anticipated limitations, allowances, the remaining years of use. And our charge was the board is hopeful that this group can engage in conversations where multiple perspectives can be considered prior to the development of recommendations. I think we met that charge. Okay, our recommendations. The first one, as a result of the limitations related to the site's size, we are about an acre and a half smaller than the minimum size recommended for an elementary school in the state of Oregon. They recommend five acres and we're a little bit better than three. So our site is too small at Eugene Field. Functionality of systems, safety concerns, and overall adequacy to appropriately meet the instructional needs of students. We suggest that you, as a board, close Eugene Field as of the 2016-2017 school year and you make an announcement, this building is not adequate as it stands, where it stands as an elementary school, okay? As it stands, where it stands, it's not adequate. Even if you put another building on that site, it's inadequate, sees where it's at. It's located between highways. There's no parking. There's safety issues. I think we've talked about closing it for a long time. I think you need to just say, we're going to do this.
Why was that year chosen?
Well, because we believe it will take at least a year and a half or two years to build a new building on another site and get a bond issue closed, get passed, okay? When you go, how long will it take to prepare the money? How long will it take to build another building without displacing students? That's about, that's about the least amount you can do. And that's, we didn't want to make it so soon. It wasn't a target you could hit and we didn't want to make it so far in the future that maybe it wasn't a real thing.
Thank you.
That is about right, though.
And just to add.
For assuming a new building, yeah.
And just to add, and I think all of you here can attest and everybody in this room, we didn't need this tour to go through the building to know that it's inadequate and it's, it's time. It's time to do something about that. So for yours is plenty of time.
Okay, we would like you to consider all available district property to move to Eugene Field. We'll just call the primary school Eugene Field. Based on economy, safety, and community input, you're going to need some more information on where to put your next building. We understand there is land available adjacent to other buildings. We have a large site at Slater Street. I don't think you need to go out and buy a new chunk of land, but you do need to look at the land that we currently have. The task force discussed it quite a bit and considering the amount of land at Slater Site, that might be a good site for the school. And we're not talking about so much rehab the Slater Street facility as to use the site, that piece of land. Is that?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. And we would advise you to create a timeline for the action to occur. Any questions on that section?
Did you guys discuss any, any other sites? I mean, Robert Frost?
Yes, we did. We talked about the Robert Frost site and one of the considerations that I heard was that because the infrastructure, the sewer, the electrical, running the electric lines there, those kinds of needs add additional cost. And so if you have to run sewer lines and you have to run water lines and you have to put in the electric, it's going to cost more than if you use a site such as Slater that already has water to it, sewer, electric, you know? So they were talking, I don't know the numbers.
Yeah.
It would be, it would be an amount to consider.
And if I can add to it, and to add to that, it might look a little, like, why are we building another building when we have?
When we have.
A couple of empty buildings to the, to the community? Like, why don't we use what we have and start from there as opposed to, oh, let's have another building, even then that leaves this one vacant over here. Anyway, it's just a.
Yeah, they were talking about on any empty sites you have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good discussion.
Okay, district base. We would like you to proactively inform the public and provide opportunity for additional public input related to the recommendations. The conversations went around, you know, sending out surveys to the people in the district to get more opinion. Be very open and very clear about what's going on and why it's going on. Yeah, okay. So clear messages to folks is these are the reasons we're moving in this direction and just so that there's no question about what's going on. And have lots of forums, public meetings.
And I'll just add a couple of things to that. So one of the things that we learned, and part of this we knew, but we learned is by talking to some of the folks out in the community, is Eugene Field is near and dear to everybody in this community. And part of maybe why some bonds haven't passed is, well, what's going to happen at Eugene Field? And the community wants to be a part of that. And so we are going to encourage you to, every step of the way, bring the community in with your decisions. The other thing that's really clear that we got from talking to people is, you guys as a board, you need to go out there and really, whatever you decide to do, wherever you are along the stage, talk to the people. Here's a bold step. I'm going to encourage each and every one of you, at some point over the next year, I want you to go door to door to everybody in your area that voted for you and I want you to thank them. And I want you to introduce who you are and then I want to let them know what you do and if they have any questions, you know, give them your name, maybe your email. Silverton's a great community and I think we all need to connect more. So I also want to encourage the administration to do that too, to really reach out to the community more and make this more of an open dialogue than it has been. Believe me, I, all of you are doing a great job. I really appreciate you, but I just think there needs to be more reaching out to the community.
There was concern from our K8 representative that there might be some negative impact on the K8 schools as they are. And so our, one of the messages we need you to continue to say is that all the other district schools are not at jeopardy from this. We're not busing here and there, we're not moving people, we're not closing any doors. This is to take care of the students who are currently at Eugene Field will have a place to be. We're not going to be shutting down any other buildings because of this, okay? That was a fear associated with the last bond issue apparently is they thought, you know, we're going to move, we're going to, we're going to siphon kids out of all these buildings and stick them in a, in a junior high situation and destroy our K8s. And so I think, you know, reassure folks that the K8s are going to stay, K8s. Okay, funding levels should reflect the priority to address Eugene Field facility only. In the last bond issue, there was a little bit of something for everybody out there and, and on this one, we're saying, just say, we need a new building. This building has been used for as long as it can be. We're building a new building and that's the only piece that they're voting on. Yes, we need a new building or no, we don't need a new building. Just make it very clear.
Yeah, I think at this stage of the game with Eugene Field, the, the people in the rural areas that go to the rural schools don't need to be convinced that this downtown area needs a new school. So let's keep the bond, if you go that route, whatever route you decide to go, keep the money, the bond low and keep it just about Eugene Field. That was real clear.
Do what you can, use multiple funding sources. It would include a reasonable bond election amount if you need to sell surplus district property, seek grants, limited use of general fund. If the board agrees to a capital construction bond, the committee recommends that you put it on the November 14 election. We had a lot of discussion about that. More people vote in November. So we have a better chance of getting it passed. We have more people turning in their ballots. It's a, it's a rather, it's a doable timeline, but it's one you're going to have to start on right away. So. Other things we talked around, we're, we're very in favor of community roots at Charger School. We'd like you to kind of keep them in mind when you're making plans. They do need a permanent home. And we'd like you to develop an action plan for future use of Eugene Field school site. I understand there's a meeting going on with the city later on in the month. There should be a plan for that site. A lot of people like the historical value of the building. If the plan can keep the structure there and someone else would like to use it, we're all in favor of that. It's just not adequate for a school in year 2014.
Joanne, on the last one, I had a question. If we were just to decide that we're going to sell the site, maybe use those funds towards another site somewhere else or another building somewhere else? We only have so much control over what, you know, if we were to sell it. What, how does that play into your last recommendation there?
I, I think we're all for it being sold if that's worth the choice.
I think we could work with the city on understanding what could and couldn't be put there and explain that, but might be as far as we can go, but I think we can give some.
Yeah.
Basic guidelines.
Because I've heard the same thing about the historical part of the building and people like that and some people like to see the building stay, but sometimes you don't have a lot of control over.
Well, what I think, what I think I heard from the community is that they want to be a part of whatever's done. It's not, I think it's, it can't just be the board and the city decide what happens to that school and that building. I think you've got to pull the community in, however that is, if you decide. The beauty of that is too, is you don't have to figure it all out because there's some very smart people out there in the community and they might have connections. And if you say, we want, we can make a friends of Eugene Field and you guys can help us decide the fate of what happens, that can go a lot further than just when the city happened to figure it out.
If I could just add to that, I served on the committee as well and I think the consensus of the committee was that, you know, as you said earlier, there's an enormous affection in the community for this historic building. It's touched the lives of generations of people in the Silverton community and it's also very interesting. If you, if you're inside, you know, except for its deficiencies, it has this sort of grand aura. And I think the consensus of the committee was if we could, if we could help preserve or work with others to preserve this historic landmark building in Silverton for another purpose, it might be a real plus in terms of getting a bond passed. Because right now, one of the sticking points, and again, I think this was the consensus of the committee in our discussions, one of the sticking points of getting the last bond passed with at least a sizable segment of the community was what happens to Eugene Field? We don't want to lose this historic building if we can help it. So, you know, people just voted against the bond on that basis, at least some people did. So if we could, you know, if we could get those people on board with a new, supporting a bond and a new building with some assistance from us, just being open, you know, as these ladies said, to an engagement with the people who want to preserve this building, you know, if we could do that, it might really benefit our effort.
That makes sense.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Makes sense.
Yeah. So it could be repurposed for another purpose. I mean, I know how you feel about it. You say, when I said, you know, it has sort of this grand aura. I mean, it looks pretty seedy right now, but you can see what it was once and what it could be again. It could be potentially a real asset to the community.
Well, and if we would decide we want to sell that property, we could, you know, give the school district's position and then work with community group or whatnot.
Exactly.
Come up with some kind of a solution. So that, that makes sense.
So I could just make another comment. Joanne was very gracious in thanking Andy and the committee members, but I'd just like to thank Joanne. She chaired the committee and she was very gracious with the committee and facilitated really free and sort of wide-ranging discussions and sharing of ideas. And I thought that, I thought it was a great committee and I thought that it did really good work. So really one of the better committees I've served on in my, in my service history here. So.
And if I may add, I didn't know that she was just another committee member chosen. I thought she was on the board. That's how impressed I was by her. Watch it out.
There's a little irony there. I did run.
Oh, okay. You didn't know that, huh? Okay. Run again.
Other questions for Joanne and Barb? Okay, once again, you guys, thank you very much for your service and the committee members who are here tonight and the ones that aren't. This was a very important thing that we wanted to get done and thank you for, that you got it done quickly and the good recommendations you brought back. These are very useful. Thank you.
And I think you could probably call any one of us or the group of us to be at any public meetings that you choose to have.
Okay.
True.
That'd be great.
I think I speak for the committee on that.
Yeah, everybody had a really strong, positive voice in our committee. It was, it was a great experience. Those are your. was a great experience. Those of you that are here.
That would be real useful as we move forward to have people who, besides us, who have seen this information, community members who have seen this information.
Especially detractors you mentioned at the beginning of your, your time on your, your committee that came around and said, yeah, they would support this.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Okay, any other discussion items tonight? Moving along, administrator reports. Andy, you already talked about some about inter-district transfers. Did you want to hit on that in House Bell 4007?
Yeah, I, I don't think I need to contribute anymore unless you have some questions specific to that. But I, I do want to take just a moment and inform the board about this late last week and how pleased that I was, and I think that you are as well, to see the 85% graduation rate for 2015.
Yeah, that was awesome.
That's impressive.
That's, that was, that was a very impressive number, and it's one that I, I commend the high school staff, of course, because they're, they're closest to those graduates, but I actually commend the entire K-12 staff for their efforts in, in not just an 85% achievement in graduation, but progressive increases over the last four-plus years. We were in the mid-'70s, literally, in 2009, '10, and at 85%, just four years later, with increments each year in between, I think is a pretty impressive feat. And so I give kudos to, to all, all staff of the district and for helping to make this happen. We still have work to do. There's my disclaimer. This is not 100% or close to 100% that we want to be, but it, it's, I believe, the highest achievement that this school district has seen, at least during my, my tenure in this district. That's it.
Okay. Scott, financial report and food services.
Well, the, your golden rod financial report is, just like your business manager likes it, it's unremarkable. It's showing a good cash flow position, and particularly on the, on the front page with the budget remaining, you can see that our revenues of $33 million are well outpacing our expenditures of $18 million as of the end of January. Page two is your balance sheet. We've talked about some of those, like the negative reflection in the checking account as not being something to be concerned about. It doesn't mean that our cash position is, is low in the checking account or underwater. It's just simply that when we charge the, it usually has to do with payroll, because we end up paying our taxes, we accrue that charge, and then we actually end up paying that tax in the next month. So, and we don't keep a lot of cash in the checking account. Jan has been managing the, the cash for us the last few months, and she likes to move money in from interest-bearing accounts at the very last minute, so we can maintain as much interest as we can get. So things are going very well there. You'll see in the summary by fund that 200 fund with the negative $94,000 number, that's typically, we've talked about this before, those are for reimbursement grants, where oftentimes we have to expend the money first and then get reimbursed at a later date. So we'd like to keep that number as low as we can, but we're doing a much better job now of managing our grants and getting that cash in as quickly as we possibly can. Then moving on to the expenditure summary, nothing really major to report there. I know that there's been some concern about in the budget amounts subject to carryover retention in schools, allocation of Pratum and Victor Point spending more. We did a quick analysis of that, and I've talked with one or both of the principals, and it's just, they're just utilizing their funds at a little faster clip. There isn't anything that's really standing out as anything to be alarmed about. We're, I think that the principals might say that we're working really well in increasing our communication, so there isn't any problems, foreseeable problems. And so we're, we're talking quite a bit about the managing of money. And then finally, the eye test, which is the, the cash flow report on the back page. You'll see that the current year's property taxes are kind of starting to wane down. We'll be seeing that kind of revenue for the next few months, mostly on the quarters as we get the quarterly payments coming in. And the state school fund, which is about halfway down through, has remained steady. And so, and then if you go kind of about three-quarters of the way down, and you're in the 2.7, 2.6 million dollars in expenditures, that's typically what we are going to be paying through the school year for our, our general expenditure. So, and that's right on path with what we had expected. Moving on, every year, the green sheet that is in front of you is the, the modified accrual basis of a, kind of a revenue and expenditure or a profit and loss sheet. This you receive every year about this time, and it's for the six months ending in December 31st of the prior month. And we do have some accruals that we put in there, but when Jan and I worked, went over this particular report, it's, it's the exact, the exact same report that was done last year at December 31st, 2012. And so comparing the two, one of the, the first thing that I did when I looked at this is I went down to the bottom right-hand side, and it said that we were, had a decrease in fund balance as of December 31st of $16,258. So that was the first thing that was concerning. The second thing that was concerning to me was the, last year's report had an increase in fund balance at the same time of $10,000 and change. So in a year's time, we're seeing a shift of approximately $26,000, and that, that is really concerning to me. So we looked at last year's numbers, and there's a few patterns that came out. And it jumped out that our sales, which is reflected in the first line, the meal and vending machine receipts are down, and the national school nutrition numbers are down, and that reflects a decrease in sales. So the revenue is down, and your expenditures are up. The expenditures mostly have to do with roll-up costs for your salary, salary people, salary costs, you know, some of those purse costs, social security, those types of things. So we're in a, a pretty common spot where unfortunately, you know, your sales are down and your expenses are up. So what we decided to do, and that second page I sent you, this little spreadsheet, I did a quick analysis of numbers of meals served and broke it out by school. And this is through, from October through December for both years 2012 and 2013. And just by looking at the bottom lines, you can see that breakfast is down 9% district-wide. The number of meals, and these are the numbers of meals, not the revenue from these meals. But then lunches is down 7%, and so total breakfast and lunch, down 8%. It's actually even a little bit worse than that, because your, the number of days that we serve, we served two more days in 2013 than we did in 2012. And so really, if, if you did it, if you broke it out even further and had gone by the similar number of days, then those meal numbers would even look a little worse. And so we met with, I immediately met with our food services director and looked for some kind of, and we just did this, this last week. So we looked for some anecdotal data, and one of the things that popped up is that some of the new nutritional standards that we're using this year are really focused on serving sizes, and it's, it's impacting what kind of food, you know, was being offered. And, and I think my sense is, and having not seen it, I think that students are less likely inclined to buy the, the school lunches because of serving sizes and, and maybe a taste profile. But the other thing that we've learned is that this, we're going to need a lot more analysis on this. We're going to need to look at, you know, what is really motivating students to, you know, bring their, their lunches from home or buy food, you know, somewhere else. So we brought it together as a cabinet, and I discussed this, and we're going to continue to meet with the food services director, but we're going to work hard, I think, in the next coming months to really get, get our arms around this and see what we can do to get that, that negative balance turned around very quickly. So.
Do we have many options around that? Because the federal standards came down, and they dictated some of these serving sizes and the types of food we sell. And so what kind of options do we really have at this point?
Well, it's, it's, it's hard to say, and, and I don't know enough about food services programs to, to really see how they would pencil out. You know, some of the options could include, you know, using our own food, essentially kind of for, farm-to-fort type of, of programs and those types of things, where we kind of focus on, you know, locally provided foods. And, and I think also, too, some marketing types of things would help as well. I know that one of the concerns at the high school, for instance, is that this lunch hour is a short time period for students, and, you know, some of the lines are quite long. And if there's ways to, you know, just increase things like, you know, speed checkouts or express services lines, those types of things, you know, there's a variety of different things that we can do to, to, you know, increase the marketing standpoint. Whether it's going to, you know, the money spent doing that is going to relate to some money on the, you know, increase in the bottom line. We'll have to do some financial analysis to really determine what that's going to be.
Okay, thanks.
You bet.
Other, other, how are other districts doing? Are they experiencing the same thing? You know?
You know, that's a really good question, and, and we have decided, one of the things that we've started doing in, in our office is we meet, all the business managers in the region are meeting at the Silver Falls School District once a month, and we have a breakfast meeting, and we talk about this type of stuff. So our next meeting is next week, and so we're going to, this is going to be one of the things on the agenda for folks to, to come and bring to the table. So we'll get a good idea of what similar districts around the area are experiencing. And they may, you know, quite frankly, because of the new nutritional standards, we may find out that they're, you know, they're all dropping in revenue as well.
Any idea why Butte Creek and Scottsdale's numbers are up and everybody else is down?
No, I don't know that. I'd like to meet with the principals and talk to them and see if there's some anecdotal data. I think interesting, too, you know, like when you look at some of the schools, like Victor Point, for instance, they're down pretty significantly, and yet their enrollment is way up.
So these are, these really are startling figures. I mean, you have 29% drop in breakfast at Victor Point, 34% at Scottsdale's, 25% at Robert Frost, and that's just this year?
Yeah, over, yeah, it's over from 2012. It's a snapshot, October through December, of both years, 2012 and 2013.
So I think we really need a lot of information. I mean, I'm curious whether students are brown bagging it or not eating lunch or breakfast, or exactly what's happening, because, you know, if students are not being fed, that's going to impact their ability to learn.
Absolutely.
At least I believe that. So I'm just very, I'm just sort of amazed to look at these figures.
Well, you know, it was interesting when, when we first, it all started from the, the regular report that gets generated. And when, when we first took a look at that line, and then we decided to compare that to last year, that led to this analysis, which has led to the obvious need for, you know, a deeper analysis to see what we can do to turn this around. So.
I think I know some of the answers to these questions, but I think you ought to ask the kids.
Oh, absolutely.
The kids will tell you the answer.
Yeah. I got answers. You ask the kids.
Yeah. And it'd be interesting to see if other districts are seeing the same thing, because
I'm, I'm
It could definitely be related to the new nutrition standards and serving sizes.
Serving size and everything else.
Five ounces of
Nice big slab of peanut butter.
Five ounces of steamed broccoli versus a piece of pizza.
That's right. And then finally, the last thing in my, unless there, are there any more questions on the food services? Just real quick, I wanted to remind you, we are keeping the same budgetary philosophy as we have in the past, and so we're starting the budgeting process. And by Friday, all the principals will have their allocation numbers out, and then they get to turn around their proposed budgets and get that back to the business office by March, the first, end of the first week of March. And that's when the department heads put in their budget requests as well, with the goal of getting all of the proposed budget to, to the budget committee on your first budget committee meeting, which is April 17th. So, well, it seems like it's a long ways away. It's going to sneak up on us very quickly. So the business office is very active and putting together the budget right now.
So Scott, you mentioned that vending machine receipts are down. How, I don't know this, even having served on the board for a long time. How significant a factor are vending machine receipts?
You know, the most, most of that number is meal, the meal receipts, because the meals are where, those are the prepaid meals that you go and get. The, the food services area gets a percentage and a very small percentage of vending machines, vending machine receipts. And those vending machines are not open during food services time. At the high schools, really, where we have kind of healthy snacks and those types of things in there. So, so even though it says meal and vending machine receipts, the vending machine, a portion of that is so miniscule, it's, it probably should just say meal receipts.
Okay.
Right, thanks.
Yeah, Scott, when you're looking and asking questions, I guess the main, I, what I'm mostly concerned about is the kids are eating. And that's, I don't care if they're brown bagging. Quite frankly, if, if they're bringing lunch from home, that's better. It's probably a better lunch. But I'd hate to find out the kids aren't eating, or they're eating just, you know, they're eating a bag of Doritos from the store and, you know, that type of thing. It'd be nice to find out what they're eating and see where things are going, because you want them to be well-fed. And just anecdotally, when, when my kids and my neighbors' kids eat school lunch, they come home hungry, and they're just kind of a mess. It doesn't seem to last. And then, and then we brown bag it, and we notice the kids come home stable. And this anecdotal from, from what I've seen asking around, you know, they're just, it doesn't, it doesn't stick to the ribs. But that's too much processed food. It might meet the standards, I just feels a little too processed, but
Well, you know, my
But we have costs that we have to meet, too. We, you know, we can't. So.
Portion control, I think, is going to be a big part of that.
Yeah, exactly. I get, I get. I just, it'd be nice to know what's really going on, if it's possible, you know.
Well, we are, we're dedicated to doing that analysis.
Yeah.
It might take a little bit of time, but we'll get those answers for you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Heidi Oster in Pratum and Silvercrest.
Good evening. Good to see you all again.
Good to see you, Heidi.
Great to still be here. I have two schools to report on this evening. Pratum and Silvercrest have one element of my report in common, and that is what we're currently doing to prepare for the Oaks testing, which is coming up very soon. In the area of writing, as you know, the district is implementing a district-wide writing assessment this year. All of my staff in both schools have been trained by Peter Bellamy, the writing coach for the district. He's helped us to develop a sample assessments that students are currently practicing. They practice on a regular basis so that when it comes to the formalized writing assessment, they're ready, they're familiar, and they're comfortable with that.
When do you see, when do you see results from that?
When?
Yeah.
In the areas of reading and math, of course, that will be the Oaks testing using the state system. This is brand new for me, but the teachers are very experienced, and they're raring to go. They're practicing on a regular basis with all of their students using the computers, so students are, are familiar with the, the testing situation, with the process that the computers put in front of them, and they're comfortable. So that's well underway, and I think we're going to be very ready for the first round of testing, which we're starting in some of the classrooms this month. After that first round of testing is complete, teachers will identify students in their classrooms that they have significant concerns about, that they fear may not meet the state standards by their second round of testing, and will add an extra level of support instruction for those students between that point and the next testing session. At Silvercrest specifically, we're being able to add additional Title I staff time. I'll talk about that in just a moment. But it will include after-school instruction in reading and math for those students at risk of not meeting the state standards, and we're hopeful that that will allow us to perform better as a school. Unfortunately, Pratum is not a Title I school, so that extra support will come from classroom staff and the classified folks. staff and the classified folks that support. At Pratom School specifically, I want to let you know that we currently have 75 students enrolled. A little disclaimer here, with snow and closure for the last few days, I honestly don't have completely up-to-date and accurate figures, but as close as I can approximate. Pratom has an estimated 32 transfer students, approximately 43% of our total population. Of those 32 transfer students, I estimate that 12 attend from other Silver Falls School District schools and 20, or about 27% of the total enrollment at Pratom, come from Salem I do want to announce that Pratom eighth grader rose to the top of the Geography B competition at Pratom this year. Pratom is a high-performing in Geography B competitions and they are again this year. This young man took a multiple-choice geography test in January and we're hopeful that he's going to qualify for state competition. And the other day, Samuel let me know that if he does qualify for the National B, he'll be there on his birthday, so we wish him great luck for that. I am looking with Pete and with Andy at some directional signage at Pratom. You may be aware that the front doors, defined as those doors that used to be the entryway facing the road, are now locked and no longer the entry to the school. Instead, visitors are to enter from the backside of the school. For those who are familiar with Pratom School, it's not a problem, but anyone new coming onto campus has no idea really where to go to enter school and I'm uncomfortable with that situation. So we're looking at providing clarifying signage that will directionalize folks around to the back of the school. And then that raises an issue of security in that visitors come onto campus between the gym and, and the classroom building and can enter the school really without being previously screened or checked by any staff member. So as the district moves towards greater security, I'm going to recommend a fence and a gate at that point. Visitors would have to be buzzed in by an office or other staff personnel on campus in order to enter to the back of the school and into the school building. So more about that down the road. And then just an update, Pratom Parents Club, they're planning their annual pancake breakfast upcoming in April. We certainly hope that you will all attend. I have never been admittedly, but I understand it's a tremendously wonderful breakfast and it is their major fundraiser each year. In addition to serving breakfast, they plan to invite local fire and sheriff's staff to bring their emergency vehicles for students to climb in and visit and they're also planning a rummage sale of some kind. A big thank you to the Parents Club at Pratom for the tremendous level of support that they give to the school, both building facilities as well as special bonuses, that's the wrong word, special support for activities and teaching materials for each classroom. At Silvercrest, our total enrollment currently is 148 students. 51 of those, or about 34.5%, are transfer students and two additional students are Silvercrest residents living outside of Silver, Silvercrest attendance area and are considered homeless due to significant plumbing leakage in their, in their house and it's unlivable at current time. Of the 51 transfer students, 45 attend from other Silver Falls School attendance areas and four travel from Salem, Salem Kaiser, and two from Woodburn.
Wow.
An update on the Silvercrest Title I program. We currently are serving 19 students in reading and we're ready to add math to the regimen of services that Title I will be providing. From the, from September, the beginning of the year, we've staffed that program with point four FTE teacher time. We have funding remaining in our budget. We will be adding one assistant at four hours per day this coming week and another six hours per day with a new assistant the following week, once we can conduct interviews. Again, we anticipate serving those students who are most at risk of not meeting state standards, hoping to bring them up to standards level. And we're going to provide those services during the school day as well as in after-school programs. Want to make you aware that at Silvercrest, we are in the midst of taking a look at security fencing around the campus. We have pretty good fencing already in place, however, we're planning to install a missing gate in the back corner of our field, two gates to prevent entry from the outside of the perimeter into the inside campus area, and fencing and a double gate in front of the gym to also bring the gym entrance and an additional classroom into a secure area. Crash bars and key entries will be included for emergency use and for ease of staff getting in and out of the fencing. And considerations being given to one additional portion of fencing that would complete a full perimeter security fence and that would be 50-plus feet from the gym to the outside north perim, boundary of the property. We're currently working on a new school sign project at Silvercrest. You may have seen some information in the local newspaper in this regard. Mark Recker, who has had a tremendous dream to have a new school sign for years, and the Parents Club have been working together to design a new sign and the funding is well underway and we think we can begin construction within the next several weeks. It will present an oval metal sign, which will include the school name, the district name, when the school was established, and a pictorial of hills, evergreens, and elk. It'll be held by two brick or stone-covered pillars on a plat, raised platform and it'll have spotlights lighting the sign.
Very cool.
It's, it's really beautiful and I'm so excited that it will be completed by the end of the school year and we're very hopeful that Mark will be able to join us for the dedication of that sign. And, and the funding really has come mainly from the Parents Club and I understand there's an outside benefactor. Don't know who that might be, who's going to support the construction of the sign as well. It's going to be pretty awesome. And incorporated in all of this will be the four pillars of Silvercrest School, which are character traits that exemplify what Silvercrest stands for. These aren't exactly the words, but they're mine and, and they are personal responsibility, caring, the value of hard work, and understanding. Great character traits that we want all of our students to, to learn, to have. And then you may have heard that there was a Mark Recker benefit scheduled for this past Saturday. It was canceled due to the weather and the Parents Club at Silvercrest is busy rescheduling it, hopefully sometime this month. And the proceed, proceeds from this fundraiser will go towards supporting the construction of the sign and any excess funds will go to a medical fund donation account that has been established at US Bank in Mark's name. Can I answer any questions for you?
Questions, Heidi? Very good report, Heidi, thank you.
Thank you.
Kirsten, Robert Frost.
I will start with some celebrations we have at Robert Frost right now. I was hoping Jackie Renaud would be here to recognize her as Teacher of the Year. She definitely deserves that. She's very involved in both Battle of the Books and Read-a-Thon at Robert Frost. Battle of the Books is huge. I had no idea what Bob even stood for until about February of last year. But once, kind of getting involved more, it's pretty amazing what she does, the excitement the kids have. Parents come during lunch every day and watch them practice, do their battles. So it's been really fun to watch that. We have 65 kids involved this year in the battle and like being part of the battle is a kind of right to passage at Robert Frost. So it's been fun, it's fun to watch that and Jackie has just great energy the kids feed off of. Also, Read-a-Thon starts this Friday. We have a goal of $8,000 and using that to replace the last two rows of computers in our library. Last year, the Read-a-Thon replaced three rows and this year we're hoping to get two more done. Last year, we made over $10,000 in the Read-a-Thon, so we're hoping we can definitely meet that goal this year. Kids get real involved and it's a great benefit. They do a lot of reading for money, so it's great. And then we actually, we had some sixth graders want to do a coin drive for the Philippines in November and that was in the midst of the food drive and then we had a toy drive and so I said, "Let's wait till after the holidays." And they still were really adamant about getting it going, so they did a great presentation at our assembly last week for relief after the typhoon. They put together a presentation, they put jars in all the classrooms, made really great little jars with pictures of kids and stuff on them and for all the classrooms and then all the proceeds will go to the Red Cross. And the other day, when a student put money in the jar in the office and then he comes out and he says, "I, I just saved a..." And he couldn't, you know what to call a Filipino? He didn't know what that meant, so I explained to him what a Filipino was and, and he just looked at me and so we, it was just like interesting because he really was proud of himself for helping, but he really didn't know who or why and stuff. So it was, it was good, but he was really proud of himself and his mom actually had been in earlier in the week getting donations of school supplies because they can't buy school supplies, but, so he was, it was just, it was kind of a neat, so the full circle there. But yeah, it was, I thought, oh, we probably should have explained what it means, Philippines, maybe where it was, the kids didn't present that part. But, so a little geography lesson on the side. And then one of my professional goals this year is creating more business partnerships and so the senior center is right there and we did some work last year with them. This year, the holidays, we did, we decorated the tables in their dining hall for Christmas and then we had a group of kids going to volunteer to do a craft with them. And Tim Duffy was taking the kids to Carol for the holidays, but the leak and the, they were closed, so we couldn't, we couldn't do that. But Doty's been back on it, wanting to get us up there for the Valentine holidays, so we're going to be doing, decorating the tables there and then doing a decorating cookie activity with some of the senior citizens up there this week, hopefully. That's the plan. The weather kind of put a little bit of a thing on that, but we'll, we'll make it. And then the skate park is sort of a, a new neighbor that I wasn't super excited about because there's no fence between, so a lot of kids are kind of cutting through our property on the way to the skate park, which isn't a great thing, but we're, it's, it's been okay. But we're, we have adopted them and we're going to start picking up trash at the skate park in hopes maybe we can, you know, they, they won't drop trash if we clean up their, I don't know. So we'll see how it works, but Daryl Jones at the city is working with me to kind of create a relationship there so we can get our kids, some of the kids that will help go pick up the trash at the skate park will be kids who also utilize the skate park, so kind of teach...
A little peer pressure.
Little peer pressure, yeah, maybe. Positive peer pressure.
Yeah, cool.
So it's, it's been fine. It hasn't been, we haven't had a whole lot of, that was a concern just with the kids, a lot of kids going up that direction. But it's, it's been good. So we're going to try to develop a relationship there so we can help benefit them as well. And then we also, I've been working with Jennifer Kurtzher at the high school and she would like to kind of adopt a class, do adopt a classroom where the concert choir comes and adopts a classroom and the kids come and mentor and they become pen pals. She actually has 70 kids in the concert choir, so she's going to adopt five classrooms. So her idea, her idea was to adopt one and I said, "Well, we might as well utilize it all." And so she actually, there's going to be about 15 or so high school kids in each of our fifth grade classrooms and our fifth grade classrooms are very large, there's about 30 in each of them and kind of challenging group. And so we're hoping we can really use this as a chance to get some positive mentorship for our students and then giving the high school chances, kids a chance to role model. So we're hoping for a little positive on both ends with that. So it was her idea and I'm giving her all the credit for it because I think it's going to turn out really great. And our kids are excited and our teachers are really excited because...
Is it this spring?
Yeah, we're starting, we're hoping in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, good.
So they're going to start with doing pen pals back and forth and we're going to try to work once a month where they can come up and then have lunch with the kids and read to them, play outside, whatever. And high school kids take a lot of pride in coming back and playing wall ball because another one of those Robert Frost things, it's very, yeah, people still remember what's their court number and all that kind of stuff. So we're working on that. That will be really fun and the, like I said, teachers are really excited and I think it'll be great for the high school kids just as much as the, as the Robert Frost kids. Just like Heidi mentioned, getting ready for Oaks, getting ready to, preparing our students. We have a second mobile lab this year with the lease from Dell, so we'll have two mobile labs and a library lab. So we're hoping we'll be able to get testing done. Scheduling is always kind of a nightmare because we just have the one lab in the library, which is in the middle of everything and that's kind of a challenge. So getting the technology part and then internet and all that kind of stuff has been, has been tricky with the two labs, but the technology department's helping us work that out. Title I funds, we actually were able to, we've added a three-hour education assistant, but also adding five hours to Barb Buchholz's position as our math specialist. So she's going to be doing some targeted math support for students after, they, they'll get their normal math time and then she'll be doing extra time. And these are kids who aren't necessarily getting a lot of extra support, they're just sort of not the lowest kids, but not the high kids in the middle that need certain, help with certain subjects. So she's got some topics that teachers have requested and she'll be doing three-week, kind of a three-week math camp with kids for, two times a week for 30 minutes, working on a really neat iPad app called Front Row, which I'm sure Tom has seen at home quite a bit. She's pretty, she's like Front Row salesperson right now. Anybody who talks to Barb will be downloading Front Row on their iPad. It's, it's really amazing and it has lots of, it's just, it's a really great app for kids and, and as soon as you put technology in front of them, they're pretty, pretty interested. And we don't have, we only have 10 iPads at Robert Frost, so for them to get their hands on an iPad, it's a big, big deal. So they feel extra special and they get their hands on that as well. And I was going to recognize Marie, but she left, but she has done a great job with the staff wellness program. We worked the grant last year and having her being the, the grant coordinator has been amazing. She's just always got great ideas and a great amount of energy. So we've got the Wellness Wednesday with us and our staff is totally bought into that. And then one of our staff members actually started doing Fitness Fridays, which is they're doing for the students. So our staff is doing special things for the students, walking during lunch, doing different things on Fridays. They have marathon shirts for our marathon club we had with the Feel Up To Play 60 stuff and so we have Fitness Fridays. So it's kind of, it's been fun to see that rolling out too. We do have a tag group that we've started, so our tag students, just kind of a time for them to get together once, once a week to, to play games, do some enrichment activities, get to know each other that we've, they've met once, so it's just kind of a new thing, but it's been neat to see students that connect in, in that way. Be, the last time they left, the last week when they left, I said, "Did you learn anything?" They all looked at me, "No." Well, we got to know each other, so I figured that was a step in the right direction. So then finally we have, in February, we're doing a February challenge, so it's an attendance and behavior challenge for the month. So all students who have perfect attendance and meaning unexcused or excused, either that to be at school or letting Thursday go. But perfect attendance, no behavior incidents, so no referrals, no behavior issues. We'll be putting a drawing into the month for prizes. We've got some gift cards that the PTC bought. And then we have 18 tickets to a Trailblazer game in April that a couple of staff members are going to take kids to. The Portland Trailblazers do a great thing. I think Butte Creek takes part in that as well, where they give great deal on tickets. I think they're, they're $5 for the student tickets and then you get an adult ticket for your, adult tickets, $5, the student tickets free. So it's pretty great that they, and they really, they, I kind of was like, "Oh, we don't need to do that." And then she kept calling me and calling me and I thought, "Oh, why not?" So I think it ended up costing like $60 and we got 25 tickets, so kids are pretty pumped about that. But now there's lots of parents calling me saying, "What do they have, an orthodontist appointment? What do they have?" So we have to kind of make sure we're clear on, on what perfect attendance is. So, anything, questions or...
Questions.
Anything? No?
Okay.
One for...
Good report, thank you Kirsten.
Thank you.
Great report. Thank you. Okay, moving along, are there any board reports tonight? Anybody have anything? Nothing? I don't think we had any correspondence, did we, Andy?
No.
Okay. Okay, a second audience with visitors. Would anybody like to address the board tonight? Mr. Pfeifer.
Thank you for the opportunity. Well, if I'd have been on the task force and I didn't know anything more than what they knew, I probably would have had the same opinion that the building is dangerous and we need to do something about it, and we need to take action. But I have a difference of opinion, and I know more than what they knew. I think that what the architects presented and the cost they presented follow something that is more in the coverage of just needs, it also is covering wants, and so we need to look at something that'll work. You know, there was a mention by Ms. Riboli about the electrical panel, or Ms. Stone. Well, I can say the same thing about the attic. I wasn't allowed to go inspect it, but the attic has no insulation in it, and I think that's pretty awesome to have a facility in a school district for 90-some years and none of the administration took care of it. So we have really needs to take care of there in that, in the school. So as I see it, Eugene Field has four categories that we need to overcome. We have an asset to save if we can. We have a real big safety issue. You've heard me personally speak that it's a dangerous building. We have scholastics to consider. We've had good scholastics there for all these 90 years. And we have a bond temperament. The bond temperament is a big issue. So I, some of you know, and I think Andy knows, I'm going to be putting together a, an alternate number based on different laterals and seismic solutions. It also needs to be comprehensive, it needs to cover everything. I'm going to even cover the problem about having the off-street parking problem when parents let their students, their children off. I'm going to cover that as well. So it needs to be a complete study. In the, in the presentation by the architects, they have a 35% to 40% development cost. I think that's way too high. Of course, I don't see any breakdown of it. I don't think it should not be including FFNE, but if it's for architects and engineers, it's way off base. I feel that this can be done in the category of several million, and I'd like to put it in the category of how do we make a bond work that we'd go 50/50. So I see it in a range of 6 million to 8 million, 3 million for in-town, 3 million for rural, and that would be something that I think would be compatible. We are stating currently in a building that is not up to seismic conditions. It's owned by the city. I personally think if there's a big earthquake, it probably could resist quite a bit, but the problem with it, it's a concrete building, it's got heavy loads where it may be crashing down below. The thing that's good about Eugene Field School is that it's a light structural building, and we need to take care of those assets. The problem that we need to separate the children from is the outside terracotta is very brittle, and that's what's dangerous. So if we can have a support structure that eliminates that exposure so the structure is maintained, I don't think the structure itself will be saved. We have a nine-point earthquake, we're not going to save it, but we're going to save the children. That is very capable of doing in that facility. So I just make a comment, in the 1993-99 task force that I was the chairman of, we said that the building of Slater Campus was good for a middle school, a junior high school, because of the athletic facilities, et cetera, that it was way too complicated for, for small kids that are just coming into school. I think it's a bad idea to be considering that location. Okay. Another thing about my thoughts, I think the remediation of the facility could be done in two summer periods. Maybe it may be elongated, but I think it could be done that way.
Two minutes, please. Two minutes?
Left?
Yeah.
Thank you. So we got an issue, are we going to abandon it, or can we make it so it's safe? So from the standpoint of saving children and the occupants, I think we can do that. I request that when I bring the information that you listen to me for once. I know that we have a historic relationship, especially with the staff, where the staff doesn't want to listen to what I have to say. You need to look, look at it. I have background in this kind of thing. I may not be a structural engineer, but I designed awful, a lot of unusual buildings with unusual solutions for seismic and lateral loading. So, and I will tell you if I'm wrong. I'll come back and I'll admit to you if it didn't work. So I make an effort to have that for the next regular board meeting, and thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Gene? Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board tonight? Okay, nobody, we... Oh, Dean, sorry. You didn't stand up quick enough.
I didn't call nobody yet. I'm close, probably.
Thank you for, thank you, Dean. Didn't see you stand up.
Yeah. My name's Dean Oster, and you know who I am, so I was on the task force for Eugene Field School, and you know, we don't, I don't think we, I certainly didn't come up with all the answers. There's lots of questions still to be answered, but I would encourage each of you to think of this one question and how you would answer it. If there was, that was a bare piece of land today that we owned, and we were going to needed to build an elementary school, would you ever consider building it on that site for any reason? And I think that's really what, what you really need to think about at the end of the day, because we can put a new school there, we can retro it, we can do, you can spend money in a lot of ways. At the end of the day, it's in that location, and that is a terrible location for a school. It's undersized, it's terribly located with highways, state highways, and you know. So to me, at the end of the day, if you can't come up with a real good reason to close that school, to me, that's reason enough just right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Stacy, please sign in and introduce yourself. Thanks.
Chair members, just a couple things. So I was also on this task force, and one thing I definitely want to echo is how very different we all are.
Name?
Stacy Postgate, I'm sorry. I'm with it.
Thank you.
So just to echo what Joanne was saying, we're all from very, very different backgrounds, and I think that probably more than half, maybe more than half the members in that room probably voted no. So we had, we had some really great conversations, and I agree, it was one of the better committees I've ever been on.
Vote a no on the last bond. Okay, thanks.
So coming to you with a consensus of a recommendation is a very big deal, and I hope that you don't take that lightly because it comes from so many different areas. I can guarantee you that there's probably very little of a John in that area at that point, but we were able to come together, for example, and present this to you, so please take that into consideration. It's very worthwhile. The other thing I wanted to address was something, Member Lerman, that you brought up, and I may have misunderstood it, but it's something that you were talking about with the sale of Eugene Field and needing to recognize there may be restrictions about what that building can be used for. I think that that is something that can very easily be worked out with the city and proposed to the planning commission in terms of changing the code. I guess right now it's a school or for public use only, but in long-term plans that have been discussed for the city, discussing that as potential commercial use is not out of the question. So that's not something that will limit you. Not to say that you can sell it to be torn down or something, but I hope that you're not, that's something that could be brought up in your next work session with City Council, for example, it's something you can do. But that was something very important that came up in the following election is, what are you going to do with this piece of property? What are you going to do? What are you going to do? What are you going to do? And not being able to provide an answer was a problem, more so than you would think, I am. So I would encourage you to, just as much as you're considering what to do with the rest of the big picture, come up with at least a plan that you can propose.
Okay.
But I do want to thank all of you for putting together this task force and allowing us to be on it, and I believe wholly in these recommendations. It was a great process, and I hope that, I hope that this is the time we can actually do something about this school. So thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Questions for Stacy? Thank you, Stacy. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Thank you very much for those comments. We have one action item tonight, is approval of the 2014-2015 school calendar. Is there a motion?
I so moved, Mr. Chair.
Second? Moved in seconded. Is there any further...
I think Tom beat me.
Tom.
Might be a Jewish.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the calendar?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going to take a short break, and then we'll come back to executive session under ORF 192660. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Drive safe in the balmy weather out there.